Okay, I think we can go ahead and start. It is 6:33. And if you would rise please and John Hall in back.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you today grateful for all of the blessings that you've bestowed on Canyon Lake and the surrounding communities. We are grateful for our freedom that we have in the United States of America. We're grateful for self-governance. We're grateful for our leaders here in Canyon Lake. We ask for your continued blessings on Canyon Lake. We ask you to grant wisdom to our leaders and watch over us and guide us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. I'm going to ask, put Martin on the spot. Would you lead us please? In the presence of the Lord.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, roll call. Councilmember Bonner.
Here.
Councilmember Aaron Krantz. Councilmember Hagerty. Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Here.
And Mayor Warren.
Here.
And we're looking for an approval of the city council agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Are there any changes that we know of? Does anybody have anything they want to fix? We're good?
Just asking.
Okay. Do we have a motion? We need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Okay, all in favor. Okay, Chamber of Commerce announcements. I see your back like a bad penny.
You know, that could have come out a little.
So good to see you, Jim.
What's that?
Now, he's doing Easter break with his daughter.
Okay.
First off, we're going to have a meet the candidates for the P.O.A. Board of Directors on Tuesday, April 24th at 6:00 PM at the Country Club. And then our annual golf tournament, and I know Larry is holding his breath on this, it's a no dice scramble, Larry. Part of it is you're going to lose two holes in the front and two holes on the back.
What was this, no dice?
No dice.
What does that mean?
Before, we rolled the dice.
Right. What happened? Is this straight golf?
Oh, no, no, no. There's way too many ways to cheat at that. In fact, the dice game got a little dicey. So anyhow, that will be May 19th. Registration is $90 per player before April 20th, 100 after. Our annual members is only 65. And the cost to attend the dinner is 25. I've got some forms I'm going to leave on the back table if anyone's interested. We're also going to have our second annual ball drop. So you can buy the balls at Pack Wrap &amp; Post, the Chamber office. They're $10 per number. And actually, I got the bag figured out this year, so it'll work. So anyhow, that's all that's going on at the Chamber right now.
Hey, Jim. We used to have a pot putting contest between the city and the P.O.A. and the Chamber.
It's getting them all there.
Trophy get moved, you know, because the city always won. So what happened to it?
Getting everybody there.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's one of those things, Randy, you've got to have all the participants, you know. It's been talked about, and if the P.O.A. doesn't show up or something happens, you know. Hopefully this year they'll participate. It sounds like they're going to. All right.
Thank you, Jim. And I meant no disrespect, you know that. If I can call, this is my favorite part, so if I can have Christopher Fisher up here with me.
This is the certificate of recognition for Christopher Fisher. Whereas the student of the month are nominated by their teachers, and a nomination is usually, but not necessarily, based on grades, character, leadership, and activities. And whereas Christopher has excelled in all of these areas by getting into the county science fair, being ranked top 25 of the Tomescul Canyon High School class of 2018 for his freshman, sophomore, and junior years. And whereas Christopher is a member of the Tomescul Canyon High School Scholarship Federation and the National Honor Society, he is also the treasurer of the Tomescul Canyon High School avid program. And whereas Christopher's hobbies are biking around Canyon Lake, researching topics he is interested in, and playing video games. And whereas Christopher has hopes to attend college at UC Berkeley or UCLA. And whereas Christopher hopes to major in economics. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the city council of the City of Canyon Lake do hereby extend their congratulations to Christopher Fisher on his accomplishments and wish him the very best in his future endeavors.
Absolutely. I got to meet Christopher at the student of the month event that was held at the high school. It's always a very nice event. I recommend anybody who has the moment to go. I always go because I love this. He's an exceptional young man and a fine student and has well earned this. You've got so much coming up ahead of you, you know that. Here's your certificate from the City of Canyon Lake. You put it in that nice frame that they gave you from the building. And if you would please tell us a few things about you. I want you to do this way and face the audience. Come over here. And tell us a little bit about yourself and what brought you and what made you try so hard to do what you've done.
Well, I mean, in terms of maybe like try so hard as at school, I'm really not that great at anything else, you know. I'm not that great mechanically. I can't fix stuff that easy. Like some people have like a natural ability to repair cars, whatever. I'm just mainly good at scholastic stuff. So I always thought that in order for me to be successful, I have to try my hardest all the time. And to make sure I get into a good university, get a good degree, so I can get a good job in the future and be relatively stable. And yeah, that's it.
Well, you've done well. You've got a lot more going on for you ahead, you see that. What's your favorite thing to do?
I don't know.
Four days.
I'm sorry.
We do it. I just want to congratulate him again. Thank you very much. And thank you for being at, Mom. Thank you so much, because look what you did. Okay, so now is the time for public comments.
And?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Any person wishing to address the city council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is asked to complete a speaker request form available on the back counter. The completed form is to be submitted to the city clerk prior to an individual being heard by the city council. City council has adopted a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you are commenting on the agenda item, your comments will be heard at the time that particular item is scheduled on the agenda. Please note that if you're addressing the city council on an item that is, addressing the city council item is not on the agenda, the Brown Act does not allow discussion of such items. Therefore, the city council may only do the following: refer the matter back to staff, ask for additional information, or request a report back, or give very limited factual response. And we have Arthur.
Fennster.
Fennster. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, city staff, fellow city council people, lieutenant, welcome, welcome. Please thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. Just a few minutes ago, we just pledged our allegiance to that flag on there. However, on October 5th, 2017, California State Governor Jerry Brown signed into law the sanctuary bill that basically defies the Constitution and the laws of the federal government. Those three laws that are, that manned it up were Assembly Bill 450, 103, and Senate Bill 54. The two most controversial, I shouldn't say controversial, the ones that are flat out just illegal against our Constitution. Senate Bill 54 says that if I'm an ICE agent and I show up to the Riverside County Jail and I say that Lieutenant, who's on the watch commander, I have a federal arrest warrant for an immigrant here on that, he can't release him. He is banned from releasing him, otherwise he can be fined and punished on that. Federal law trumps, pardon the pun, local law on that, but he's forbidden to do that. Probably the worst one on this, that I actually say on this, on the AB 450 on there, is that local employers can, must, they're required by law to give heads up to their employees if ICE is going to be coming in and doing a compliance check. In other words, looking to see people have their papers. So if you're the owner of one of these local restaurants here and I come in to you and I tell you, Mr. Bonner, just as a courtesy as you own another restaurant, so we don't mess up your operations, we're going to be coming in and doing this, I'm telling you, do not tell your people in advance. If you do not tell your people in advance, you'll be fined between $2,000 and $10,000 by the state of California. It's against state law. So you're sitting there saying, okay, if I go ahead and do it, then I'm going to contempt or, you know, obstructing justice from the federal government, that's, I can go to jail for that, I get fined. If I don't do it, if I do do it, then I get fined the other way on that. It's just insane. On February 6th, the Department of Justice obviously filed suit against the state of California. But what I'm here to talk about tonight and ask quickly is on March 19th, the City of Los Alamos, Los Alamos, pretty much the same size as us on that, about 12,000 people, demographics pretty close to us, but actually 20% Hispanic, we're not quite as much there on that, took the bold, brave, heroic, and historic action of defying that and saying that they're opting out of that law. Right after that, the City of Elisa Vallejo, Escondido, the County of Orange, and the County of San Diego also came forth and opted out of that and are also, some of those are joining the lawsuit with the federal government, which isn't required on that. It was posted today from the mayor of Los Alamos that in addition to what they did, now they've been contacted by the City of Huntington Beach, Buena Park, Upland, Fullerton, your old, old city there, Costa Mesa, there's also that. In fact, tonight, some of these are voting on the same issue as well on there. I did a Facebook poll on Monday night at 8:00. I posted on that. I was curious to see what would be the gauge of interest from people inside our community. And the question I asked on that, and I have a copy I'll give to all of you, so you can see for yourself on that, basically, would you support the City of Canyon Lake council issuing a resolution to opt out of the state's sanctuary law, blah, blah, blah? The choices were yes, I would support the City of Canyon Lake opting out, no, I would not support it, and one was neither, I don't understand. 282 people in two days said I support it. Again, I have the numbers here, you can see it, you can't fake this, you can only click once on that. And 15 people said no.
I'm sorry, Art.
We're done.
We don't have a beep, but we have the three minutes.
Okay, all right. Well, there was 15 people and now that's 95% of your constituents want you to issue a resolution, that's what I'm asking you to do, to put that on the agenda. That's basically what I'm trying to say, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
I will, this is not on the agenda, so we, by the Brown Act, we can't really comment on this. I will have comments when it's my turn to speak at the end to address this, because it is an issue that has come up many times. So do we have any other public comments?
No other public comments.
Okay. Okay, we're out of the consent calendar. Would you please read, I'm starting.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Before the?
We'll go ahead and read consent calendar issue. We're going to call the speakers.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous city council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion with the concurrence of the city council. A city council member may request that an item be removed for further discussion. Staff recommends approval of all items. Jack, one second.
Oh, good evening, Mayor. One item here, 7.4, is something that I really have thought about, and I know that Larry Green has too. And it happened just the beginning of this week, they brought it up again. We're operating our fire service there with two people. And happened to, they responded to a person that had a heart problem. They left Captain Carter on the phone. They got one fireman left, and he really had to search around for people to help. And that's the only way it works. I'm glad we at least have two, but I'm glad to see that you're filing, hopefully you can guest a three-man crew, because a two-man crew does not operate efficiently at all. Well, I'll take a fire for instance. He's responding on a fire. The person that's driving the apparatus, they get to the fire hydrant, you drop off the one man to handle the hose at the fire hydrant, he drives to the fire, he hooks it up, there's nobody there to fight the fire. So it's extremely important that we try to push for the other man. As Larry knows, I've had 50 years in the fire service, and I know that it is a problem. So I'm really glad to see that you're taking this step. I think it's a good step, and I wish you success. If you need any help, I'll help you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Are there any items council wants pulled from consent? Nothing for discussion? Okay, any other motion?
I move to approve the consent counter.
No, second.
Okay, we need a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bonner.
Yes.
Councilmember Aaron Krantz. Councilmember Hagerty. Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Yes.
And Mayor Warren.
Yes.
Motion approved 401 with Councilmember Aaron Krantz absent.
Schedule of future events, they're listed here, they're also in the Friday flyer and also on the city's webpage. As always, if anybody out there has something that they feel is missing or they would like added, please let us know, just call City Hall or send an email to any of us, and we'll make sure that gets put on. Okay, business items. Verbal report regarding potential business solicitation regulations.
I'll turn that over to the city attorney. We'll talk to the code enforcement first, but then the city attorney will chime in.
So a little bit of legal background. Mrs. Sunny from our office, she's done the research on this, and I can, she can speak to it as well. In regards to solicitation, you're in a unique situation. In general, when cities try to do solicitation ordinance, you run up against the First Amendment, which protects time, provides time, place, and manner restrictions on free speech. When you have a gated community, you don't have, the P.O.A. doesn't have First Amendment constraints, they're not a public agency. So their solicitation rules come from a case called Golden Rain, which Sunny can summarize, and it's basically an excess issue.
So that case basically says that if you allow solicitation, one member to solicit, then you have to allow everyone else in. So the solution is that you ban all solicitation, but of course, there are some issues in enforcing that, so that will be a challenge.
I think the P.O.A.'s done that. So the question is, if we have that?
It does come down to enforcement.
However. I think, I think the problem you have had is not a solicitation problem, but an honesty of the company problem. And I think that there may be some, I don't want to say they're big, there could be some things that could be done through business licensing, which Gina actively enforces, that may be able to help address this. It's going to take a little more effort by the city, but it is more of a consumer issue which you're allowed to regulate than a can I walk up to your house and you solicit? Solicite you?
Real quick, because just so we all, we kind of jumped into this in the middle of this, for this discussion, but the issue has been solicitation inside the gates as far as on P.O.A. property. The city has code enforcement, Gina's going to address that in a moment, that we can do for nuisance value. We are, we do not have a solicitation for inventors. Now we understand.
On purpose.
On purpose. We do that for a reason, because it gives the power where it belongs with the P.O.A. I personally had to deal with this quite a bit, phone calls all the time, emails all the time. The attorney is absolutely right, this has more to do, in this particular instance, what has brought it to this point, has less to do with solicitors in general, and more to do with specific business practices of certain solicitors. In that way, we can, code enforcement can help the P.O.A., but we cannot be the sole source of enforcement. And the P.O.A. being on site, they're going to have to, they're going to have to step in and be the ones, we've come out how many times, I'm sure you'll address that, that we were called and went out several times and there was, and the person wasn't there.
Correct. But keep in mind, for one particular business violating the business license requirements, but also has a history of aggressive behavior while soliciting. So soliciting is always difficult, because different cities, not the City of Canyon Lake, they deal with so many different solicitors in an area. They like to set rules and restrictions or boundaries for all of them. In the case that they're talking about, no solicitation, that's kind of easy to enforce. If you're in here to solicit, you get a citation. That's, whoa, enforcement at the pool is, there's no exceptions. But the flip side to that point is, it also would have to apply outside the gates, and it would apply to nonprofit organizations, and it would apply to churches. This is going to be direction that you provide, and we are going to do to the best of our abilities with what we have been given to ensure people comply. I would personally like to see stickers on vendor vehicles from the city that identify them, that can't be taken off their windshield, as the P.O.A. cards are often taken off once they get in the gate. They have their card, they drive away, they put it up there, but as they're going down the road, it goes in the glove box. So now there's no way for an enforcement officer to recognize, was that a vendor? How did they get in here? I would like to say it should be, because there's no executive sticker on the car window or a City of Canyon Lake sticker on the car window, but that's not going to hold up in a hearing. And I'm not going to cost taxpayers money to try to enforce something that we can't win.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Jenny, can I ask you a question? Is it possible for you to come to the roundtable next Monday at 8:00 at the Country Club?
Yes.
I'd like to have, with the P.O.A. in attendance and attending the city.
Yes.
And talk about the subject. At the roundtable.
I would be happy to assist in whatever will get us all working cooperatively in the right direction.
Right, but if Aaron makes that decision.
Yeah.
Make the decision we just made.
He gave me the okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dana. We do have a public speaker on the side.
Okay.
Bill Vandenberg?
No, it was 11-1.
11-1, okay.
My apologies.
Oh, okay. So we'll need a motion to give staff direction. I think we kind of just did, sort of?
Are you clear?
Yeah, I think staff's clear on where the council wants to go.
Okay.
So we'll develop that and we'll bring that back to the council.
Okay, perfect. All right. So that takes us to a public hearing. That's item 11. We're going to open the public hearing at, no, I'm just wondering this. At 6:55, we're going to, we're going to open the public hearing. And can I take just a moment? You're welcome to stay for the public hearing if you'd like. Most people sneak out. Christopher and Mom, if you want to sneak out, you can. But we'd love to have you stay, because I think that you should be up here eventually someday.
This is your technical.
No, but I think you'd be good. Okay, so I need the staff presentation. You're on.
Good evening, honorable mayor and councilmembers and staff. My name is Mark Dematikor, and I'm the project planner for this project, which is a continued public hearing for a request by Chris Hansen, who's requested a variance to the Hillside ordinance to allow for a 1.5 to 1 cut slope to build a single-family home on, hopefully a one-acre pad. And this property is located on Surrell Lane. At the last meeting on March 7th, when we opened up the public hearing, we heard testimony, and the council gave us direction on that they would like some more additional information. One was to find out if there was any outstanding issues with the previous house that Chris has built on Surrell Lane. And two was for, to provide additional information so that our engineering staff, Margaret Munson, could make better findings in relation to the Hillside ordinance. And I'll give you a, keep it short, and I'm going to give you a recommendation in just a second, but after I do, I just ask that you, Margaret Munson, to give you a report and update. And so my recommendation is that we close the public hearing after you hear a testimony. Staff will work with the applicant to get the information that's been requested. And once we have that information, and staff has had a chance to review it, we will reschedule for a public hearing and we'll redos. And that is my presentation. If you have any questions?
I don't have any. Anybody else?
At our last meeting, we gave, I thought we gave a time restriction and said that the two parties should get together and information should be exchanged, and a decision would be forthcoming from you to recommend for or against it. Did that meeting take place?
I'll let, that was Margaret. She did meet with the applicant's representative who was here tonight, Mr. Bill Vandenberg. I'll let her give you that report, so that you can, you'll understand why I made that recommendation I just made. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Margaret, can you join us?
Yes.
Good evening. Glad to be here. Actually, I wanted to let you know that, yes, I did meet with the applicant's engineer, and he is here this evening. I gave him a list of items that I was going to meet based on the Hillside variance, Hillside ordinance. There's a provision for a variance, and I use the term variance even though the language or the word variance isn't contained in there. One of the items is specific in that the grading proposed in connection with the development will not result in soil erosion, silting of lower slopes, flooding, severe scarring, or any other geological instability or fire hazard which would affect health, safety, and general welfare as determined by the city engineer, and all other requirements of applicable law and regulation. That's one of the findings that I have to come to, in that I have to determine that all of those things were actually contained within the application. And I was not able to make that finding. Met with the applicant's engineer, and I gave him a list of items that he would need to do based on the Hillside grading guidelines within the ordinance. And communication back and forth is that they are going to accomplish that, but they need time in order to do so. So as of today's date, there was a, one item that I did look into, and that was the WQMP and the violation with the city. I did contact the State Water Resources Control Board, and all of those items had been resolved. So one of the things that had resulted because of that was that they would expect to do stepped-up observation with the city to verify that WQMP submittals are taking place where they are required. So that's, that's one of the things that, for example, should this result in an approval, one of the items for a Hillside permit, a condition would be a WQMP. So I don't want to belabor the point here, but there's several items very specific within the Hillside ordinance that I am looking for, that I actually gave this list over to the applicant's engineer, and he's aware of what is needed. Do you have any questions for me?
Do you have any questions?
Do you have any questions?
The projected timeline from the applicant to get the info back to you, is it?
I don't have that information.
You don't have that, okay. So we'll leave it open or actually close it until such time all the information is completed and reopen it?
Margaret actually had, talked about, I guess, closing the hearing and taking it off calendar and then re-noticing at a time when they're ready to go.
Okay.
Because some of those items that are on the list that are needed definitely take time.
Just for clarification, the applicant clearly knows what they need to do to get, be brought back onto the agenda.
Everything was in writing.
Okay.
So. Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, are there any other questions? I appreciate that clarification, I just wanted to make that, Mark's recommendation I think is, is the same, that just take it off and when everything, if and when it all comes together, then we'll put it back on. Yeah, we'll have to actually re-notice.
Just Bill?
Oh yeah, we're not, we're not making. Oh, okay, yeah. Okay, thank you very much. You're welcome.
Thanks, Mark.
Speakers?
Bill Vandenberg.
All right.
Bill Vandenberg.
Bill, you're on.
Thank you for having me tonight. Chris wishes to go ahead and do all the stuff that Margaret is required and complying with all that, just doesn't want to do that with having some information from you guys that you will approve what he plans to do. We can do a more better presentation of the plan and without doing all the studies, the hydrology, the WQMP, we can include the W key on the plan, but not go through the full formal expense that goes along with hydrology, the hydraulics, the WQMP, the slope stability, the soils report. It's a lot of money on a maybe. So if there's some way we can shortcut some of that stuff, get you what you guys want, satisfy her without going through all the studies, that's what Chris would like to do. It's a lot of money that he's already spent, a lot more money that he's spending, he's going to end up with a nice lot, but that's kind of the direction he doesn't want to go. I fully understand everything she's looking for, it's just straight out of the hillside ordinance, all the typical stuff, a lot of the same stuff we did on his other residents, except for the WQMP. We understand we will need a WQMP, we'll need to do a SWIP, slope stability, and he's willing to take the risk that it will work out as far as soils goes and everything else. And if it, if, the slope stability analysis does not provide a one and a half to one, then that's his risk. So, thank you.
I think, I think what you're looking for from the council is something the council can't decide until we're, we're all, what you're looking for is an assurance that it is impossible for us to give without being at that point. So unfortunately, you have to get to that point before we can say it. It's, it's like saying to somebody, promise me you won't laugh. Well, you know, so, so I understand his position, truly, we all understand his position, but you have to understand that we can't promise something that we are not able to give and it's just the way it is. We can't.
Like the slope stability analysis, why do we need to do that at this point? For you to see that, I don't understand something like that.
Okay, well, that is something, we won't be, I don't think we need to debate this evening, correct?
I think, I think these are questions that are better addressed perhaps to Margaret and Mark.
Right.
When you and Mr. Hansen are able to meet with them.
Right.
And it is possible that they may provide information that makes them say, oh yeah, that makes us comfortable.
Okay.
And maybe not, but I think you need to talk to the experts.
Right, right. And that's, that's not us.
Thank you.
Get there, though. Okay, do we have any other speakers for this? No other speakers. Any other questions from the council, we're good? Okay, then we'll close the public meeting at 7:07. And now we have a discussion, bud.
Do we need a motion to close this?
Not to close it, but we need, we do need to.
Take it off calendar, bring it back when staff has the information.
Okay, I make a motion to remove it from calendar until staff provides the appropriate information for us to make a decision on where do we go from here.
I see. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bonner.
Yes.
Councilmember Aaron Krantz. Councilmember Hagerty. Mayor Pro Tem Green.
Yes.
And Mayor Warren.
Yes.
Motion approved 401 with the councilmember Aaron Krantz absent.
Okay, that moves us to 12 city manager comments.
Just quick, Mayor Mayor, back on March 12th, we were, the city was like enough to host the, the bimonthly Riverside Division of the Lake City's General Membership Meeting. And all the information we're getting back, we're just getting all kinds of kudos. Everybody liked the fact that we had at the country club, they enjoyed the food, it was a really good experience. I want to thank the mayor and staff for a wonderful job they did organizing that, they did a great job.
Just, I have to say again, staff, Mike, I know you're going to try to hide, it's not going to work. This was an incredible effort. We were, okay, first of all, we were kind of misled. We were told that, that well, we can agree to it and then Lake of California Cities, they'll take care of everything. Well, they did, but Mike and our staff did and a fabulous job, truly. I get nothing but comments, compliments on it also. So again, thank you very much.
That's all I have.
That's all you have?
That's all I have.
Okay, then we'll move on to councilmember comments. Brandon Bonner?
Okay, I'm just going to cover two subjects quickly. One is to a public safety, we had the public safety meeting yesterday and I found it was very well, and very well attended. I think it's been a long time since we had that many people come to the public safety meeting. Two decisions we made, we found that there was three where an animal has attacked a person walking down the street and breaking into the skin and we're asking that we get a knowledge of that so the city manager can know it and let us know so we don't get surprised. The other thing had to do, and Lieutenant, if I say this wrong, you correctly, if, unless there's an injury on an accident or it's blocking traffic, they don't require a deputy to come to the accident, okay? Not that they won't, or won't come, but they don't need to. Am I saying that correctly, Lieutenant?
Yes.
So they've been very good about keeping us informed and we appreciate for the city manager to know, so the rest of us, because we get emails from all different places or calls and we'd like to know before, so we don't get surprised. The other thing I just want to bring up, RCTC, Riverside County Transportation, they're really making an effort now, two things that close to our, one is the move the I-15 up through Corone and they're going to, we're working it to first have a design to widen it and probably put a toll line or in there. So it's going to, it's going to take some time to do it, but at least it's on, on high on their, on raising, raising, on the radar. And then also this interchange, Railroad Canyon, if, Lake Elsinore, that's another one. Now they're trying to move it back in, into the design completed in 2019 and completed by 2021. So, well, they have the attention of what we're trying to do and this is one of the reasons we go to these agencies, is they listen to us and all this, we have, one thing the mayor and the mayor Pro Tem has done is all six regions around here, they're getting together and talking monthly or every month. And we haven't been doing that in the past, so it's quite a tribute that Vicki and Larry have done. So that's it, that's it?
Okay. Councilmember Aaron Krantz is quiet. Councilmember Hagerty?
We won't hear about that.
No.
No, I can't tell you about mosquitoes or lice or anything. I do have a rat that keeps coming back in my garage.
Five here, four?
Three.
Four. I am involved with the Riverside Transit Agency and I just wanted to make an announcement that I've been working with them for several months and this coming Friday, the 6th, they will be making a presentation at the Senior Center. It's an informational presentation for seniors or disadvantaged people or veterans, anyone that would have a need to require a ride, a dollar ride or a ride from a friend or take the bus. They give all kinds of information, what's available from the state to help and what they provide to help. After that informational meeting, they have a travel advisor that's going to travel with anyone that wants to go. He will take them to the bus stop out in Railroad Canyon. He will guide them through the bus down to the outlet centers, give them a couple of hours to have lunch and shop, and then guide them back on the bus so that they have an experience riding the bus. I have several friends who can't drive anymore, they have to have friends take them or they have to find some kind of transportation. The bus is very reasonable, they have senior rates. It's amazing the places that you can get from here on a bus very easily, the buses are air-conditioned, Wi-Fi, it's wonderful. Anyway, we have five people signed up so far. They tell me this is a good number. I was hoping we'd have 15 or 20, but the flyer, and I meant to bring it and left it home, beautiful flyer that they printed up, gave to the Friday flyer, it's in everybody's paper. And so far, they've had five people called that definitely want to go. And I think they had three or four calls of people that just said they want to come to the meeting, there was no requirement to call to come there and I think we'll have a good turnout for that. So they've gotten out of their way. It's phenomenal, the ways that they want to help the community and I, if anyone's out there listening and they can support this, I'd really appreciate it because I think you'd be surprised at what's out there for you.
What time is the meeting?
The meeting's at 9:30 at the Senior Center. The informational part will probably be about an hour with questions and answers. They have a video, you know, presentation, it's very professional, they'll be able to give you all kinds of information and then you can ask questions and probably not, they'll be the guided bus tour.
What's the date?
Friday, the 6th.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Mr. Green?
Well, it's been a busy month. We, this was the agenda for the Regional Conservation Authority that we had just on Monday and they're still on track of purchasing additional properties so that they can connect all their dots that give animals pathways through urban areas, also to protect what trees and plants we have in our region so that they will be not history in the history books, but will survive and thrive. And the latest acquisition, two acquisitions, were about $4 million and some dollars because 30 acres of flat ground, flat ground in the city of Menifee carries a lot of dollars with it. So quite interesting, that's a very, very good program. I've also been invited to assist the city of Temecula in their disaster business resumption conference that they put on last year, their first annual. They're putting the formulation team together, we meet next week, to really talk about topics, speakers and that kind of stuff. So it's kind of nice that we're going to be part of that and, and being that we're in that circle. We sent 11 folks from our emergency preparedness group to Lake Elsinore to do the NIM Sims training because on May 12th, we're actually going to do a complete citywide drill, will be an earthquake scenario, not only city staff, the ELC will be activated, all of our area coordinators will be activated, the medical component will be, so we have several different things that we're testing communications and all of it. So it's been a while, so it probably won't be the easiest or the best, but at least it's an attempt. And so I think that's good. I do want to say that we've had some very positive feedback from our surrounding cities and mayors, the mayor and myself have attended. It's amazing that our common issues that we talk about are really relative to us, from our streets, our roads, to such things that are currently in the, in the news media. So I think the more that we're involved and represent our city, the better off we will be in the long run. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things, I do want to kind of build on that, in case anybody wonders what your city does, being on the council gives us a seat at certain tables that go outside our little local city and to our region. So we don't have a Walmart in Canyon Lake or Circle K, you have to go somewhere else to do that. In order to do that comfortably, you have to rely on these other cities. If we are focused only on our little city and not regionally, Canyon Lake doesn't get a voice and we don't, I don't get to say, what are you doing? Why aren't you taking care of that stoplight that has now screwed everybody's commute up? So that's what we do and that's what, what we've been talking about here, is that we've joined these task forces now that have brought us all together and it's really very beneficial because now you have a voice outside of your little local city that affects the things that you do, hospitals, buses, road construction, shopping, everything that you do outside of Canyon Lake, you have a voice out there too. So I just wanted to kind of remind everybody that's part of what we do. To go back a little bit on sanctuary, I know it's a hot issue, we all get hit up, all cities are getting hit up on this. I'm not sure if the request was to put this on the agenda for further discussion. I can give a little information because we did have a discussion among the mayors the other day on Monday. All cities are going through this. We contract with the sheriff. Sheriff Smith has made it clear that they must follow state law. We can't countermand that. So no matter how many suits we file or no matter how many fists we pound, it's not going to make a difference, that's, that's what we have. We have to, as a city, be very responsible for our actions and the things that we do. We have heard that the judge is no longer even looking at these amicus briefs, although there are cities surrounding us that may be filing them, it not, is not necessarily something that we can afford to do, the consequences may be too much. So when everybody is considering the things that they would like, speaking personally, I'd be first in line. I'm the first one that I would be signing that petition or doing whatever I need to do. But I can't speak personally, I have to speak for everybody. And so unless everybody has voted on this and has told us that they want us to do this, we're no better than Governor Brown if we decide to do it just because it's how we feel. He decided to make California a sanctuary state. I didn't have a voice in that. I don't feel right making that decision for anybody unless they have a voice also. So there's so much to think about before we decide to do this. We will discuss more, there's more information coming in all the time. If it becomes prudent and safe and a smart move to make, we certainly will do it if that's what the citizens want. But we do have to consider if our name goes on to a legal brief and there is a lawsuit against it, it could be in the six digits, which means we lose our fire station, we lose one of our sheriffs. We're talking about funding for a feel-good, a political statement, something that gives us comfort and makes us feel better. Are we willing to do that? So that's just something everybody's going to have to think about themselves and if they feel like that is worth it, then you come back and you let us know that's what you want us to do. And now back to, I do have a question. We've had some, some discussion about an incident that we were going to hopefully have an update today, the vehicle that was parked. Okay, can you join us and give us an update? I'm using up all my time.
No, we don't.
Yeah. I had all my time, but I had nothing else to say, so that's okay.
Good evening, Mayor, council, members of the community. I'm Lieutenant Ravenhusky from the Canyon Lake Police Department. We did have a discussion at the public safety meeting, apparently there was a post made on a public social media site regarding an incident with a traffic collision, is that what we're talking about, Mayor?
Yes.
The deputy was spoken to tonight, we actually, I actually received information during tonight's council meeting. And the incidents portrayed on the Facebook site aren't exactly what transpired. There was a conversation, there was, without, there's obviously a peace officer bill of rights, but the incident itself, there was alcohol involved, it did not lead to a level of intoxication or anything that would have prevented the person drive a vehicle safely. There was a discussion during the hour of the investigation in that there was talk between the parties and there was talking about training about this or that. It wasn't what was portrayed. The deputy appears to have done what he needs to do and there is some training issues that need to be addressed, but they weren't, they didn't affect this incident. And I'll give more information to the city manager so he has. And I'll give more information to the city manager so he has that. Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, Lieutenant, and again, as we talked about yesterday, as Facebook be talking, did the deputy ask for another deputy to come and help him in the process and nobody responded, or was that not true?
We did not find any indication of that. Whether or not that was asked directly, I have to speak to the watch commander. I just received a summary of an update.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind getting back to Aaron, then I'd like to know if that happened or not. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I don't remember who said it, that you can't believe any of what you hear and what you see, but on Facebook, it's a lot less than half.
Yes, and I also wanted to add, I spoke to the party who posted the incident, she was actually here yesterday. No one who was actually at the scene, she was not at the scene.
Right.
No one who was at the scene has come forward to make a complaint, to ask for an investigation. This was all just as a result of social media.
I appreciate that and I know that you field a lot of our calls because we, we get this and everybody's all in a frenzy and so we call you and I appreciate that you always treat it as if it's the first time we called.
That, no, you're welcome. And when something happens that shouldn't happen, we need to know too, because I need to take action.
Absolutely.
I appreciate what you did to go through, but being on the other side as, as I have been, when you have people making allegations that you're not properly doing what you're charged to do and the only way that that can be totally either addressed is you gotta get all the facts. And sometimes the facts take longer than just a phone call.
Absolutely.
And I really appreciate you following that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, one more thing.
Hey, one more thing. This Saturday from 8:00 to 2:00 at the church, there's the Canyon Lake Citywide Cleanup. It's a free event with CRNR and so bring your...
Bring your stuff.
Bring your stuff there.
And no paint, no feathers.
No paint, no walls, things, things that have to be disposed of that way.
I'll let you on.
They will, e-waste that is banned from landfills, they will take.
Okay.
Yes, they will.
All right, I think with that, we close the meeting at 7:26, 7:25? Very good.